For a minute I said no.
They knocked down below 25,000 square feet, so they didn't violate that rule. But that's a single house.
Yeah.
It's 24,600 square feet. You know, that's two blocks away from where I live. And I go by it every day. And it just keeps getting bigger and bigger. I can only, you can see most of it from the road, not completely.
I think we're all here.
Yeah, we are for a change. That's good. Are we ready to go? Ready? All right. It is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting of the Meridian Township Planning Commission together, please. First, I will call the roll. Commissioner Trisise?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Cordill?
Here.
Commissioner Shrewsbury?
Here.
Commissioner Richards?
Here.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Primo?
Here.
And I, Commissioner Blumer, I'm here. So we have a full panel today. The next item will be public remarks. I'd like to advise everyone who is here today. We have, you have two sessions to speak to the board. The first is a general session of public remarks where you can speak about just about anything that deals with the township development. I ask you to, if you want to speak, please fill out a speaker card. Give us your name and address. And your presentation will be limited to three minutes. The second opportunity will be, there will be a time for public comment after each of the public issues that we deal with. Again, we'll ask you to fill out a card telling us that your name, address, and what you wish to speak about, and we will give you an opportunity to speak at that time. So is there anyone who wishes to make just a general address to the board at this time? All right, nobody, all right. So we will then proceed to item number four, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Cordill, second. Seconded by Commissioner Richards, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There are no nays, therefore the agenda is approved. Item number five is approval of the minutes of the October 10 regular meeting of this commission. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Vice Chair Trisise, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Snyder. What, no. No, she did, I'm sorry. Okay, Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner Snyder, and we'll give her the honor there. Is there any comment on the previous minutes? Any corrections, discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote then. All in favor of approving the prior minutes, say aye.
Aye.
No disapproval, therefore the minutes of the October 10 meeting are approved. Next, the board will recognize that there are communications concerning one of the issues before the board today that we received at the time that the agenda was prepared, and that is from Charles Cotts. That is in the packet that the commissioners have received. Since that time, the record should reflect that we also received three others. One was provided to us by Director Schmidt. I'm gonna bring that up. And that is a letter addressed to the commission by Kathleen, I don't have a la, Kathleen Murphy-Kitty. And then today, the board received two more communications, all of which relate to the first item for our discussion this evening, and that is the special use permit 22091. One of those letters is from Dondra Kirk, and the other is from Joshua Burkitt. All right. Now, we are then proceeding to item number seven on the agenda, and that is public hearings, the first being special use permit 22091, which relates to Grand Reserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a special use permit to construct a 115-unit residential development consisting of 60 duplexes and 55 single-family residential homes. This is all going to be under one ownership that totals more than 25,000 square feet between Central Park Drive and Powell Road. Because it is over 25,000 square feet and under one ownership, we've determined there's two separate approvals going through here. You'll be asked to, eventually asked to approve the SUP allowing single-family residential development in the RD District as part of an overall development. That, that approval will fulfill one of the conditions, I'll get to in a moment. But the 25,000 square foot condition, because they're not individual lots, that will go to the board, so you'll make a recommendation on that same time. The property was rezoned to the RD District in February of 2021, but it was a conditional rezoning. There were six conditions of that rezoning. The, what I'm gonna point out right now is the prop, the property, the development of the property is limited to no more than 220 units. There's gonna be no fewer than 25 single-family detached homes, and the eastern 11 acres of the parcel needed to be developed as single-family residential. All six of these conditions have been met with the concept plan that you see in front of you tonight. As far as the physical features of the property, there are four identified regulated wetlands on the property. They have shown a 40-foot buffer as required by ordinance around all four of the protected wetlands. There is one small issue on the southwest corner. They have their access road going through one of the buffers. This does not impact the wetland per se, but because it is in the buffer zone, it will require a zoning variance. So the SUP can be approved with, with the condition that the site plan not be approved without a variance in place, and that would be fine, we, you know, we can get there. But that, that was brought to our attention. Other than that, though, there are no flood planes on the property. They have a full traffic study that they've submitted to the road department for their review. I have a comment letter in your packet from them. Sanitary sewer and public water are available on the site, and it's under review for our engineering department as well. So the property meets the conditions, the proposal meets the conditions set by the rezoning. It's consistent with the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance. It, it's well within, 115 units is all, just a little bit more than half of what was allowed by the rezoning in 2021. The wetland, wetland report confirms the, that the wetlands are, you know, confirms the wetland boundaries, and as I said, they're, they're, the buffers are in place. One comment from the fire marshal, no parking signs will need to be installed on one side of the road to allow for fire access. Other than that, oh, and we are asking that before the site plan is approved, we're gonna ask for a development agreement to be signed between the township and the applicant. This is because these are private roads, this is a rental development. The single-family homes are not gonna be sold, just, just so that we know, moving forward in the future, how's the maintenance gonna be handled. Other than that, like I said, you're gonna eventually be asked to potentially approve two resolutions. One will be the, for the single-family development in the RD District, and the other one will be a recommendation on the 25,000 square feet. And other than that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or turn it over to the applicant.
Just one question at this point. My reading, I don't have it up on my screen here, but the comment from the fire marshal, at least from the write-up, said there will be no parking on the streets. Didn't say one sign, from my recollection of what I read.
I copied and pasted out of an email. If there's some more, if the, if the, if what I provided is, says different, then that'll trump.
Yeah.
I, I didn't, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the...
That came after the email I got from the fire marshal.
No, I read it the same way you did.
Okay.
There will be no parking.
Okay, then.
Good.
Do I understand that the traffic control study applied to both Powell Road and the western boundary of this development?
That's correct, yes, yes.
Because I know that there's a lot of residential concern about changing the character of Powell Road, which is basically a rural road even though it's paved.
Right.
I guess I'd like some guidance on procedurally if the special use permit were approved conditional on a successful appeal to the variance for the wetland buffer. If that variance were not granted, what would happen next?
They would have to amend the concept plan and come back for amended SUP.
I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant what, what might happen in that event in terms of a...
Sure.
A site plan, because my reading of it seems like it would be, it imposes fairly drastic limitation on the...
Yeah, on the other hand, there, you know, with the, the presence of the wetland, you know, on that side of the property, there's not a lot of other options for road going through there, so, yeah.
That's what I've been interested in hearing from the applicant.
That will be brought up, I'm sure.
Brian, let me ask you, are there differences? The entire development concept is a rental.
That is correct.
If some of this were to become privatized and sold, sold off individually, I mean, how is that, how is that different, or what, what would change as a result of that?
They would... They'd have to rezone, wouldn't they? Because it's RD.
You'd have to split.
We'd have, we'd have to look into the specifics of that. Because of the RD zoning, they might have to rezone it to allow single-family parcels? Because, remember, these are part of an overall...
Right.
...multi-family, you know, quote-unquote, development. So I can give you a more solid answer before the, before the 14th.
All right. The agreement that you are requiring from the developers relates to that topic, correct? I mean, it has, has to do with maintenance of the property because it's a corporate ownership?
Well, we're noticing, these, these are intended to be private roads. There are sidewalks. Because these are rentals, they're not parcels, therefore who's gonna do the mowing? You know, who's, weed control, you know, tall grass, who gets the fines, that kind of a thing? That's, that's what we're looking to nail down. Sewer and water, you know, issues with the, you know, they're connecting to that.
Are there any other questions for Brian?
Not right now.
Thank you.
Of course.
Let me ask, is there anyone from the developer that would like to address us? Please.
Good evening, I'm Joe Lacricchio. I'm here tonight on behalf of DTN Management Company, the partners and developers of the Grand Reserve Residential Community. With us tonight is Matt Diffen, our project engineer, and also the owner of DTN, excuse me, and the head of the construction department of DTN are here as well. So we appreciate the opportunity to be here.
And your address is?
316 Burtwood Avenue, Traverse City, Michigan, 49686. I'm gonna repeat some of the things that Mr. Shorkey said, so I apologize for that. The Grand Reserve is a residential rental community consisting of detached and duplex style homes. The project is comprised of 115 units in total, 55 single-family detached, and 60 duplex homes. Under the existing RD zoning, we would qualify for up to eight units per acre density, or 220 units. However, we're here this evening presenting a project consisting of only 3.57 units to the acre with 115 units. Our site measures just over 32 acres in size, and our site plan provides for over 20 acres, where nearly 64% of the site is open space. The plan features sidewalks on both sides of the road, a dog park, nature trails, and community, community gardening areas with raised beds for the use and enjoyment of all the residents. There are large natural or planned landscape buffers between the project and the surrounding neighbors, and there's a spacious community clubhouse provided that features a pool, an exercise room, a gathering room, and outdoor play structure. The site amenities are conducive to all active lifestyles. With respect to the homes themselves, all homes feature three bedrooms and three bathrooms with an option for a fourth bedroom and fourth bathroom with the finished basement. The detached units measure 1,864 square feet and feature a first-floor master bedroom. Each unit within the duplex models measures 2,059 square feet. Both unit styles offer four different elevation options with varied design features and finishes, and the units feature large garages and spacious storage in the basements, whether finished or unfinished. These homes will appeal to a wide variety of demographics, from young professionals to empty nesters. Within, for, with many more people working from home, the three- or four-bedroom option can address the growing need for the home office. And many people across all age profiles, and whether by choice or by limitation due to rapidly rising interest rates and challenging lending criteria, are looking to rent a home in a great community versus being able to buy a home these days. Grand Reserve will provide that opportunity. It, with respect to a few items from the reviews from the engineering and other departments, I'd like to address a few of those items if I could. We have already received and addressed comments from the Ingham County Road Commission. Soil borings have been completed and are favorable and conducive to this development. A copy of the borings report will be provided to the township as required, or has been provided, excuse me, that was part of our packet. Soil borings are there. We are not intending on installing a sanitary lift station, as all of our engineering indicates that we can service the development with gravity sewers. And to the, to the chair's question about the traffic study, the traffic study is regional in scope and covers Powell Road certainly, as well as Central Park. So with that, we're all available to answer any questions that you have.
Any board members have any questions?
Not at this point, but let's, let's get the rest of the comments done.
What, what are you anticipating the average cost of per unit?
Average?
A range of, of cost per unit to rent?
Rent, rental rates?
Yes.
I mean, these are going to be market rental rates with, you know, recent, recent relevant experience with units, similar units like this. You're looking at 25 to, you know, $3,000 a unit range.
Are there any other questions?
Is that the, is that what you estimate that you'll be charging?
Yes.
Okay.
I do, but I have to ask the comment first. All right, thank you. What we'll do is invite public comment, and then we'll have you come back and respond to the questions that they raise. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? I know that we have a card from Cecilia Kramer. Would you like to address us now? John McCracken? Is there anybody, anyone who would like to make any comments about... Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Reading is not one of my strong points. Is there anyone in the room who would like to address the issue of this regional development? No? All right, then why don't we have you gentlemen come back? There's a couple more questions then. Has your... Would you fill out a card for us, please, ma'am?
Afterwards.
Yeah.
Afterwards.
Yeah, you can do that afterwards, just let us, right now, just tell us your name and your, and your address, please.
My name is Anne Perkins, I'm at 5972 Village Drive in Hasslet. I've worked in healthcare, and before a hospital can add beds, a needs assessment is done to see if there really is a need for additional beds. Was any kind of analysis or study done to see if indeed Meridian Township needs this kind of a "development," quote-unquote? Whether it's filling a big hole or a hole nonetheless, was any kind of study done? That's my question.
Very good, ma'am, thank you. It is a very good question. Anyone else before we bring the developers back? Gentlemen? Were you able to hear her question?
I was, yes. Was a specific study done about need for rental units within the community? Not, there was not one specific done to this, however, we firmly believe from all of our experience in this general market, right in the surrounding areas, that this is a large need in the community and will be for years to come. Raji, looks like he might wanna lead something on that.
Yeah.
Could you give us your name, please, sir, and your, and your address?
My name is Raji Uppol. I'm moving between addresses, so I had to think about it for a second, but I'm in, I'm in the quarry apartments that we have built out in Dewitt, off of Clark Road, so I apologize about not saying my address exactly. But I used to be a Meridian Township resident also. The question about, has there been a study for it? The answer is DTN has been building products like this. We built a product down in Holt. There's about 40 homes down there, and they're actively needed and wanted, similar price points, similar need. We have some townhomes down there that are also similar. We just built 85, 82, I'm probably saying the wrong number out in Dewitt. I live there now. My family of four lives in one. It's a flat that we live in with a, with a finished basement below it and a two-car garage. They are, we finished building those, geez, in the last three months, and we're 90% occupied approximately at this time. We are finding that there's this mid-market, and what's happening, and the reason when you ask that question is there's study for it. We, we manage, I don't know, we manage probably 5,000 units here in the Lansing area. A lot of them we own, and some of them are for third-party, but the majority we own. So in terms of hiring someone to do a third-party estimate in our backyard, we normally don't do that because people ask us actually what we think the market is. And I'm not saying that we're the market leader, but we're probably the biggest in the Lansing area in terms of managing conventional, and we have some student housing also. But this, this, the need here is what we're trying to do here, is that we're trying to build products that will have a flexible use. The one that has a bedroom down on the first floor and has a second bedroom on the first floor will be very adaptable for people who wanna have first-floor living. In addition, there still will be a second-floor bedroom over there and bathroom, but it would be more guest-oriented, or if it was for a young family, would also fit those needs. And we're also building some two-story ones that would accommodate young families. Well, I don't know if it's all families, but it would have a three bedrooms on the second floor, and all of them have finished basements. What we're finding when we're building these is that as we do finished basements, people live there longer and it's stickier, and that means that's what they desire. And so we watch them, build them as if they're their own home. So the only difference, in my opinion, between someone who is buying a home and renting a home is their duration of use. And what's caused that duration of use change over time has been that we used to think, at least back when I started and got my first job, my first question is, what's the pension? What's it gonna look like when I retire? Well, things have changed a little bit in terms of the demographics, and people more likely have jobs for a shorter period of time, they live in multiple locations. And so from that duration and stuff like that, we're finding that there is a big demand for a rental product versus a for-sale product. And the current costs and escalation of interest rates are making it much less affordable to buy homes.
Very good.
I don't know if that answers the question, does that answer? But in terms of a formal study, no, I didn't do a formal study.
Yeah, a couple of things. First, a question I posed to the, to Mr. Shorkey about the implications of, had, did you, have you done any sort of render, thoughts about a layout that would not encroach into a wetland buffer and what that looks like? And the second one has to do with the, these last comments, but I'll, go ahead.
I'll let him talk in a second, but just a little bit of knowledge. When we first gave a concept plan, there really has been no way other than this, and we showed this concept plan to the board and to planning prior. What we did is we made a concerted effort because there was so much worry. At one time, we talked about mitigating wetlands. So we made the biggest effort that was humanly possible to make this project viable without touching these wetlands. So we did not mitigate any of these wetlands, we did not move any of these wetlands, we did everything that we thought that was asked of us from our prior interactions with Meridian Township. So we down-zoned in terms of the number of density. We minimized the impact to the absolute minimum that is possible to run one through and still have a road come through this, this, this entity. We took out all the multi-10-unit buildings and other things that we had in there, and we tried to keep it as basic as possible to accommodate what we believed was the direction and the, from the prior board and our interactions with you guys. But the answer in terms of, if that road's not there, then it would be segmented, and there is no great way to put it in there. But we did everything we could, and this is very consistent with what we showed in our concept plan to you guys in our prior submissions.
Thanks for recalling that discussion. I remember the, the concerns that the board and others raised, and that there isn't really a way on that parcel with that tight corner to get a connectivity from one end to the other without cutting that corner, even, there's just no way to do it. The other one, though, I'm sorry, I was scanning for something else while you were talking about other products and you used, you were talking about finished basements?
Yes.
Was that regarding a different project or this one?
Yes, in Dewitt, where I live now in Quarry. I live in a finished basement in a product like this.
Okay.
And I live usually in our property, in our properties if I can, to enhance the product. I mean, example would be as simple as we have a walking trail. And I saw someone always using, I saw a bunch of people at eve, in the evenings, walking their dogs, and he said, hey, you know, it might be nice to have lights so that you could walk on the trails, and I could see that there would be some landscaping lights, it would be, those are the types of things I do. So I, we're committed to our communities, we're committed to our customers, and our best way to know what they want is to experience them. Now, I don't go out of my way to say that I live there because I don't want 20 people knocking on my door, but the reality is I wanna experience and live this so that we can make it the best we can.
No, I got you, I was just, when I heard finished basements and I was thinking about wetlands, I was thinking, oh my gosh, but if, they're not going in here, that's...
We have the ability to put a finished basement in there. There is going to be a bathroom below that's piped, unfinished, and there is, there is an ability to do that. So we're gonna let the market drive what that demand is. We've been going to a lot of these rental home seminars that are nationwide that are happening, because this phenomenon is not just Okemis, Michigan, this is nationwide what we're describing here. This demand and this type of housing is one of the biggest growth markets in the country. They are saying that it, that people really are working from home, and the best thing you could do was put more bedrooms in there. Now, from our perspective, we didn't wanna commit to that, so we left the flexibility to do that, but we wanted to accommodate it if indeed that's what the market demands.
Gotcha.
If I could clarify, there is, the engineering dictates we can put basements, and it is our intention to put basements on each one of these units.
Yes.
All right. That includes the duplex units?
Yes, yes, it does. Okay, I've never personally understood digging basements in Michigan, but plenty of people seem to get away with it, and if the engineers say yes, then that's fine. I feel like we should be paying people to fill their basements with sand, but that's just me. I, I also wanted to point out, I recall that nature trail, you were speaking about nature trails, being part of the earlier discussion, I'm delighted to see that in there, I think that's an excellent feature. And also, there was a question in the public comment that was in the packet about walkability, and I just wanted to say that that development is, is like a half a mile from Tom's. It's like a mile from Aldi, a little more than a mile from Meyer. That's, as far as this township goes, that's walk, that's about as walkable as it gets, right there. Now, there's some big roads to cross, but we got brand-new intersections, so it actually does meet our, our goal of putting people in walkable distance. And I hear a lot about the market for renters by choice, and I, I think a lot of us still have some preconceptions about renters that does not apply to the market of renters by choice, that people who have the, the resources to do that and they choose to pursue that financial model, so...
It's also a quarter of a mile on the Home Depot, which is much more important.
I mean, just as an example, in Quarry, our median income is in the $100,000 a year range probably is our median. And I use median because there's people with more and less, so I try and average, instead of saying average, the median. The average would be higher.
Thank you. The single-family dwellings and the duplexes are both two stories? Is that right? Do you have elevations in mind? Do you have elevations in mind?
They were part of your package.
I was trying to dig through it.
But there's a lot of different options.
I apologize. It was already 35 minutes.
Sure, no, I understand. Do you have an, great.
He's going to, he's going to get to them. It's a good-sized package.
So that's the duplex, and then there's four different options, you know, with different brick or stone or.
Can you zoom in on that at all, Matt, or not?
I don't know how it's going to look on their screens. Can you see that on your, I don't know how it looks on your screen.
It's pretty clear.
Pretty good. So I'll just keep clicking through these slow, so you get a general idea of when we say we've got different, same product, just different view, so it looks like a real neighborhood and it's not just a cookie cutter. And this is the single unit. And again, we have four different options on that one. Go back.
Could you please call out some of the materials, the outside?
Yeah, so it'll be a combination of stone and siding. So the front elevation will have whether it's stone panels or brick panels. You can see that unit right there has a lot of stone or brick on the front elevation. And then the others will be, will be a combination of vinyl siding, shakes, shingles in the gable areas. So that's the general direction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, this is a little bit off, different than what the other questions are, but do you have any developments, similar developments where you have a certain number of the units are more affordable in terms of geared towards people who are in limited income?
This, I mean, this project is clearly designed as market rate. It is not an affordable housing development. So this, we, and, you know, typically you don't see those together, if you will. You don't see market rate with lower-income housing. And we, not, Raji, I don't think you have that in your portfolio, if I'm not mistaken, but.
We haven't.
Yeah.
This product is to fill a gap for people that are like working at the Frib, people that are going to be transferring to the GM battery plant that we have coming here, hopefully other opportunities that are coming in the Lansing area. So this is a, someone who wants to work, is probably a professional, or two people that are semi-professional. I'm not trying to say that they can't be something else, but the point is it's going to be that type of demand, and that's pulling in from the GM workers, that's going to pull in from the Frib, it's going to pull in from the hospital at McLaren. It's attracting that type of clients, attracting professors, it's attracting that kind of market. So that's what this focused, this particular product's focused on. We have a wide range of products. We don't typically do like a Mishda affordable type of product in terms of quote "affordable", but we do have various pricing on apartments throughout the Lansing area.
I might add on to that, the one thing about this is it's got a really diverse, you know, the product's diverse. So you will get empty nesters, you will get families. Those single-family units will get, and the detached units will be conducive for empty nesters as well as a family.
The reason I bring it up just is not necessarily hypothetical, but I do a firm amount of work with, in voluntary area where people are looking for housing, and the low-end housing market is nonexistent in our township. And I know one of the goals of the master plan is to provide more affordable housing. This, and nothing against your project, and it's, looks like a very nice project. That's just, I guess I had to ask a question, so.
And if you start looking at the pricing of building materials and the increases that have occurred in the last few years, we're seeing north of 30% increases just in the last 12 months. And so when you talk about affordability, that in itself inherently causes conflict. So it's going to take community involvement, government involvement, and cooperation between businesses to really, really, really stretch, to figure out the ways to do that. It's a tremendous need and something we would love to do, but we haven't yet figured out the economics to do it. And it's, in my opinion, going to take a collective action of totality of a bunch of people to do what you're talking about. And we think it's essential, to be honest with you, for our communities here, but the reality is that with the inflation and the interest rates, the way they are, it's getting worse, not better.
Good. I guess I would make one other, at least, observation. It sounds like more of the larger employers are looking at bringing their employees back to work at least two or three days a week, as opposed to allowing folks to work five days a week or most of, you know, of the time. So, you know, there's, I think there's always a concern that if there isn't the market, then what's going to happen to the units? And, you know, what clientele will you be drawing? And how will that impact the residents nearby? But again, that's more conjecture than it is fact at this point.
We've owned our units for a very, very long time, so if you want to look at some what our products look like, please, please come out and visit us out at Aspen Lakes, or please visit us out at Quarry or Quarry Village. And you'll see 10, 15 years later, the quality of the individuals that live there. And we want to bring this to Meridian Township. To be honest with you, we want to bring what we're having success at other communities in the region to Meridian Township. And although I've moved out because I'm living in one of our communities, the reality is this is our home, and we believe in what we're doing.
So it's not because you couldn't afford to live here?
No, I sold my place on my lake and moved there. But if I'm honest with you, I like it better, just between all of us here.
I do have a question. Has there been any predicted impact on the school system?
I can talk in terms of at least what I'm seeing out of Quarry, because I can't speak to this, so I'll give you a feeling. There is a large, diverse market segment, and there is a lot of children in our community. So if we're looking for schoolchildren, I can tell you it's pulled in, it's school-aged children throughout, but I also see empty nesters sitting next to them. And part of the reason I'm living in these communities is to look at what that dynamics looks like. And it's healthy from my perspective, maybe I'm biased a little bit, but I'm proud of what I see in terms of that interaction. And there is a lot of kids that are moving in there. By the way, a lot of pets, too. So if you like the hugs, there's a lot of dogs and a lot of kids that live in our communities.
Any other questions?
I do. It's kind of hard to see, maybe we could get an area. I was just trying to follow along with the pedestrian circulation. And I applaud him for living in one of his developments. I think we could use more of that in our communities. But just by living there, you have a stake in it. Because.
There's a sidewalk on both sides of the road.
Either side of the road.
On Central Park and Powell.
On either side of the road, behind the curb. So, you know, speaking of walkability or accessibility, sidewalks on both sides, you have nature trails throughout much of it, integrated with the gazebos and the dog parks and, you know, so that interact, the community gardens are within those big, beautiful common areas and so. But from a walkability standpoint, we tie into your walks on either side of the project, on the main roads. And you do have that full interconnectivity with the walks on both sides.
Okay. I live south of the area, and there's quite a bit of options there, just locally. You could pick up a newspaper, you could pick up milk, whatnot. And I'm just, you know, Central Park and Grand River, there will be a pedestrian walkway on Grand River. So that connects with the existing. Can you, Brian, tell me, you did in general terms where the Catta bus stop is you?
Yeah, it's on, it's located on Holt.
No doubt I've seen it, but it just hasn't registered.
Catta, Central Park Drive.
It does.
Central Park Drive.
Further north of the site, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's on page three.
Actually, there's one right across the street, too.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Turn is across the street.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it's just south, there's one just south of the project, right across the street.
Yeah, I think that's the southbound.
Yeah, but the other one's north of the project on our side of the street. If that makes sense.
At Newman Road?
It might, I think it's a little past there, but yeah, it's right there somewhere. It's, I'm sorry, it's been a few months since we put this stuff on the plan and cleaned it. That wasn't one of the things that we looked at.
Oh, okay, that's Newman Road. Okay, I was just trying to, in my mind, okay. And I was trying to think of the one that's east of, it's the closest bus stop is on Grand River, east of Central Park Drive and south of the project site. So that seems like that's towards Tom's, yep?
Yeah, that's the, the eastbound 48 going out to William Street. This is the number 22 coming up into the mall, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Do you plan to build this in phases, or do you see it all going in at approximately the same time? You also talked about options, and I'm wondering how that works, this is probably outside of our scope, but how that works with the rental development? Do you identify your potential renters and let them customize the build like some owner would, or are you?
Well, there will be an option for that finished basement, so, and then the elevations will be interspersed throughout to provide that variety. But as far as the development of the site, the way the site works with the engineering, the sewer, the water, the storm, the roads, that will all be developed in one phase, certainly. As far as construction, single-phase, okay. So that's the head of construction telling you one single phase, so there you go.
Thank you.
I have a question that really has nothing to do with you folks, but maybe you can answer it. Has the disaster in Florida impacted construction here in Michigan? Or do you expect it will?
I mean.
Sure.
Okay.
Greg Sislow, DTN, 4010 Sneaky Lane, Holt, Michigan. The answer is yes. After it happened, lumber started going back up again. We're definitely going to see some shortages, but by the time we get going on this and we get out of the ground, which will be springtime, things should be lightening up, so they should be better. But, I mean, everything, drywall, you name it, appliances, it's slow on everything.
That's what I thought would happen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I, this is an observation, and I appreciate the intent of the project, but being on this commission for five or seven years or whatever it's been, I've come to a conclusion, and having grown up in this community from fifth grade, that we all live in houses that somebody didn't want built and had reasonable objections to. And part of the development process is that there are certain, there are always going to be sacrifices, but there's also going to be gains. And I think, I'm saying this in general to anybody that might be viewing, our decisions need to be made weighing those factors and deciding whether the benefits outweigh the downsides. And, you know, I understand what you're saying in terms of need and all that, but I also understand that people were buying houses when the market was, interest rates were at 11%, you know? And that was in the, that was in the late 70s, early 80s. And, of course, you know, you're making 14% and 15% on your investments. So, you know, I get the interest rate argument to an extent, but I also understand that, you know, there are also equity and value issues. So for me, it's that weighing. And the arguments that we've read and the concerns that the people around it have in terms of preserving some of the natural features and so forth are certainly legitimate arguments. And what you're saying about a for, housing that provides a reasonable option for the kinds of things that are going to be happening in this area are also reasonable arguments. And I think that as a commission, our task is to say which is greater, you know? And I think we have to make our decision that way. We do have a value in this township about preserving green spaces and preserving wildlife areas and preserve, you know? So there is a value to a certain amount of preservation. So those arguments should not go unattended, in my opinion. We also have a need, as you pointed out, for places that people can reside and because of the work environments are changing and so forth. So this is not going, I don't think it's a cut-and-dry decision for me personally, and I don't think it's an easy decision. And what I realize is, however we decide, sacrifices will be made on one side and there will be gains. So that's just my general observation. But the development that I live in, there were all kinds of reasons why people didn't want it, because for the same arguments that we're hearing now and in a lot of the subdivisions. And when I lived here, there were three, and now there's quite a few more. So this is not an easy decision, and I personally am not taking it lightly.
I just want to share that I echo many of your concerns. And the, I found it interesting that we're being asked to approve a special-use permit for something, you know, greater than 25,000 square feet. But I, I mean, combing through the documents, I didn't see exactly what that number equated to. It's easy to calculate when you have the number of buildings and they're all roughly 2,000 square feet. So it's, you know, 230,000-ish, give or take, total. That's a lot, a lot more than 25,000 square feet. So I found that interesting. And also, looking back to the 2017 master plan, I just want to read from page 64. Income disparity, approximately 60% of the population owns their home while 40% rent. Homeowners tend to have higher income, be older in age, and have long tenures in the community. Alternatively, renters are generally younger, have been in the community for shorter periods of time and have lower levels of income. While the median home value in the township is $181,300, wow, those were the days. The number of housing options valued between $50,000 and $200,000 are declining in the township, making it more difficult for young professionals and families to move into the community. Median household income for homeowners at this time in 2017 was $92,971. Oh, I'm sorry, that was in 2014. This was published, obviously, in 2017. Renter-occupied households earned $30,000. Homeowners spend nearly $1,400 per month on housing, and renters spend $800. I have a lot of young, professional friends, not one of them is saying we need more expensive housing options in this community. All of them are saying, where are the houses that I can afford? Where are the places that I can afford living? And I understand that there is a niche and a need for high-end rental properties. I do understand that. However, that niche is not in the demographic of people that are, you know, 25 to 40 years of age, generally speaking. I just wanted to say that point. I think that this township has a limited amount of space, be it to preserve for green space or to develop. or to develop in a way that matches our goals for our master plan, and allows us to provide housing for people that they can afford. Everywhere I look, there are new developments for this demographic only, and that is frightening to me.
The question, I think it might be for staff. I remember, it took a second for me to recall this, coming before us last, two years ago, last year. And I remember one of my concerns at that point was the density of the project, which has now been minimized, but with our approval, is that sort of they're limited then to the proposal in front of us? Or would they still be allowed to build to what the rezoning allows?
No, the concept plan would be part of the approval itself.
Approval, okay. I just wanted to be sure that that couldn't be changed without coming back for more discussion and conversation. Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
I'd like to make a comment in response to Commissioner Snyder. There is a difference. I've lived in this community for fifty years. I'm not gonna tell you how old I am. But there is, there is a difference between student rental and the kind of rental that these gentlemen are predicting, which is gonna be visiting professors, or scientists, or middle-class professionals who simply don't wanna buy for various reasons, maybe because they only anticipate being in this community for three or four years, and they don't wanna have to go through the hassle of buying and then selling. And I don't think there's anything wrong with anticipating and preparing for that segment of the market, as long as we don't ignore the other parts. Now, they've, it is, from what I can see from the projections, the land use appears to be appropriate to me for that area. I've driven past that for years, and nothing has happened at all there. The land use appears to be well-adjusted to the community needs, but more importantly, to me, it provides a very specific type of housing for a very specific type of home user, not homeowner, but home user. Somebody coming here from Germany to study at the Frib, or to do some science at the Frib for two and a half years, is not gonna wanna buy a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home in our community. He's gonna wanna find a place to rent, but he's not gonna wanna rent an eight-hundred-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment like a student would. And I think this is geared for that type of person. And frankly, I, as long as we don't eliminate opportunities for people in lower-income brackets, I think there is a place for this, and we also have to take into consideration, as far as I can tell, and I've been watching this fairly closely, the market is really changing. A lot of people are no longer buying houses because they can't predict where the mortgage is gonna be, or what kind of rates they're gonna be paying, but they know if they're gonna be renting a house for three thousand dollars a month, that they're gonna get a heck of a nice house, and they can live there for three or four years, and then go back to wherever they came from. So, I don't have a problem with what you are presenting here, as long as the board recognizes that we shouldn't be eliminating the other end of the scale.
And sometimes my, my passion precedes me, so I took the time to look up Aspen Lakes here and Holt, and it's absolutely stunning, like, I'd love to live there. Okay, so I'm not denying the beauty of this property, or this project, or the potential that it has. And I would agree that, you know, there's a place for developments like this, of course. I just, in my short time on the commission, this is, you know, we've got Hazlet Village Square, which is a similar niche. I mean, they're also rental properties, and they're in a similar price point. There's, there's just, I of course wouldn't want to eliminate opportunities for people in a lower-middle income bracket, but I think that when, when we're planning and approving different developments that continue to be in these upper-income bracket tiers, that in some ways it does eliminate those, the opportunities, you know, for alternatives. And I, I'm not even talking about affordable housing, you know, the definition of affordable housing, I'm talking about just middle-of-the-road-type housing, be it rental or homeownership.
I guess we're sort of related, it'd be good to, if we could get from staff, a listing of the projects that are out there, and how they compare in terms of the demographics they're seeking, because we have Oakhamus downtown, and, and, you know, there's a fair number, in the hundreds of apartments there. We have, you know, the Hazlet Square with several hundreds, so I guess I would be interested in the number of units, and whether the target is similar in terms of the...
Are you wondering what's approved and on the, oncoming now, type of thing? Okay.
Yeah, that haven't been built. That's number one. I guess related to this project, I guess the thought came to mind that, I wanna say way back when duplexes were looked at as a means for, say, a younger married couple to actually own the duplex, rent half of it, and own the other half. And then, you know, they're building equity, and they're the landlord, or, you know, they have control of the property, and so how does that work in terms of, the question came up about whether they were owned, it would need a rezoning, but if you've got two units, and one's being occupied by the owner and the other not by the owner, then is that, you know, is it potentially possible to build that same project on this kind of property? Because I understand the zoning issue here in terms of single-family versus multifamily, but the fact that these are all renters, and again, there's, there's nothing wrong with renters, except, in my opinion, and I've been here only thirty-four years now, my township was, in terms of the scale back thirty-four years ago, and fifty years or more, the homeowners were way over here, and there were very few rentals. Now, you know, the rentals, pretty much, either they're balanced, or they're, they're more than the people that own properties and live in them here, and that's a different dynamic in terms of just people that are gonna be here short-term versus long-term. So, I think there's some value, not only, you know, from the vantage point of the community is having a more balanced homeowner versus renter ratio here, too. And again, it's sort of, I guess, looking at the ability for somebody to own the duplex and rent half of it, if that fits this kind of, fits the rezoning. And again, I know this is a question I'm just asking, so he may not have the answer right now, but I'd like the answer to that question.
Could it be done under the zoning?
Yeah.
Now, are they doing it? That's a completely different question. They have an proposal, but can it be done? Okay.
Because I think that part of what we have to look at here is, you know, what are the possible developments to go on this property? And obviously residential, but are there, are there more than just strictly a non-owner-occupied rental housing versus at least partially owned? And I think it addresses Commissioner Snyder's question about affordability, in that if somebody with, who is getting half of the, you know, is covering half their costs in a unit, makes that a little more of affordable.
I'll look, let me see, I'll find the answer for you.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm sorry, I just, real quick, I really like the idea of us being able to see an inventory, I guess, of like what, what's out there in the township as far as housing, and what are the needs?
I guess I would add, too, that the development that's at Jolly and Oakhamus Road, they're building two or three more units there, those are relatively new, they're somewhat the same demographic, high-end rentals, too, so I would put those in the same mix when you're looking at it.
Right. Commissioner Cordell?
These are valid discussions, but we have an application in front of us, and I would suggest having, not the official vote, but a straw vote.
Go ahead.
So, again, I think maybe a question for staff, being that this is all one owner and they're building, they still have to meet all of what would be a setback requirement for individual units?
That is correct.
With it, okay, so like, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tricise?
I guess my comment after Commissioner Cordell was, is, I agree with that, but also point out that this property has been undeveloped for many years. We have a proposal on the table, and if we were not to approve it, who's to say that it won't remain undeveloped forever? And these are property owners that have a certain amount of right to utilize their property, and our decision should be based on whether it's an appropriate use, and fits in with the area and the community needs, and I think that's where I come down.
It occurs to me that there's another issue here, and that is, this is a comprehensive plan that's been put together. If we disapprove this and leave it open to the possibility of individual development, we lose a lot of the control over the property that they are proposing. It's a unified plan, and that's almost always beneficial over scatterbrained type of situation.
But there's also, there's also the possibility of thinking of that property not being developed, period, to preserve, you know, you know, there's some ecological arguments that could be made, there's some, you know, you know, and some of the people that have raised their concerns, you know, in terms of wildlife and so forth. So, we're assuming that the property needs to, needs, necessarily needs to be developed. Well, that, in my mind, that's not necessarily the case, and that's why the decision isn't as cut and dry as maybe people think it is, because there is an option to let it be. And, you know, at what point do we not develop? You know, and at what point do we say, you know, this forest really just needs to remain a forest? And we don't, and we can make all kinds of good arguments why it'd be neat to have houses there, but... So, it really is a balance issue, and I don't disagree with the, with the reasoning for having a development like this. There's all kinds of, you know, reasonable arguments for it, but the flip side of that is, you know, at what point do we not need to develop anymore? Or at what point do we say, you know what, here's a piece of land that we can just leave alone, and let it be? And it's not like this community is hurting in terms of revenue or anything else. And in terms of the school issue, you know, that large of development is going to put pressure on that particular area in terms of school. Cornell, they don't know whether they're gonna move it, rebuild it, you know, that, that whole discussion's going on, and you're moving, you know, people out that way. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues flowing here, and so, I just think that, for me personally, there's more to it than just this or this, and I don't think we can always ignore the option of just saying, you know what, it's okay that this property isn't developed.
Good. Sir?
Can I respond to that, please? This, there's a conditional rezoning on the parcel, and it was approved for RD up to eight units to the acre. Now, if this conditional rezoning ultimately is not granted, it would revert back to the RA, okay, which it is zoned. So, it could be a use-by-right, where it could be developed under RA, right? Without, you know, without levels of approval, without controls like you have here. So, you just, it basically becomes a use-by-right, and you develop it under the RA. This is a well-situated piece of property that will be developed. And, and so, what, what we are proposing is something that does give you the control, does address a market need, and so, we, you know, that's the intent of the, of what we're doing here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If a straw poll were taken, I would vote in favor of this project. They more than met the conceptual plan, and density, they cut it in half. I think we need to take a step further.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. If there were no more comments, I was gonna ask for a straw vote. I would like staff to clarify right now what we're voting on, though, just to make sure that we understand what's coming.
What will the ultimate proposal be? You know, we're straw, we're straw-polling, but what...
I will bring, based on your straw vote, I will bring two proposed resolutions to you in November. One will be to approve single-family development in the RD District, which is a special use, because it's a multifamily, but it'll, single-family's allowed as a, in a, in an overall development, it's a special use permit. You will approve that. You'll recommend approval of an overall development that's over twenty-five thousand square feet in size. That will go to the board. That will be a formality at that point, frankly.
So, two resolutions.
So, you are essentially voting on the concept plan that you see in front of you.
Okay. All right, then, the chair calls for a straw vote on the concept as it has been presented to the commission this evening. All those in favor?
For a straw vote, we don't take it.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the concept as it was presented?
I'd like to roll call, oh, you wanna roll, Bobo?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. This, this is a straw vote? All right, so...
Just clarifying that this is a non-binding vote.
Right, okay.
This is, this is how we're leaning.
All right, so I'll start with Commissioner Cordell?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Shrewsbury?
I'm leaning towards yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Uh, leaning towards yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Um, I'm unsure right now.
Okay.
Commissioner Primo?
I am also not ready to commit.
Commissioner McConnell?
I support what the applicant is attempting to do. I am in favor of this project in principle. I hope that we don't lose sight of the issues that we're grappling with as we work towards a revision of the master plan, because I think that's where we generate the sorts of public-private partnerships that are gonna be required to make it economically feasible to get the kind of housing that we want, so that's my thoughts.
Vice Chair Tricise?
I'm leaning towards yes.
Okay, and the chair, right now, sees approval for this plan, so I would vote yes. Yes?
Okay, one clarification, this regards the setback which the road is crossing. Can somebody point out where that actual wetland setback is? Does it run parallel to the road?
Between the brown tree and the green tree, up on that corner.
Right here's the wetland, and right here where the road's tucked along to the property line. So, the... So, the wetland, there's still a 20, 25-foot buffer, there's just not a 40-foot buffer anymore, because we're not.
Okay, so the whole road that's running east-west there?
The wetland comes up like this, and it goes, drugs in and out, but it's, the buffer comes almost all the way to the property line.
On the south side?
Yeah. So, the hardship is that there's no way to connect this road and the development without going through that wetland buffer. But we're not impacting the wetland at all, and there's still a green belt between the wetland that we're not impacting and the road that we're provoking.
Is there any way that you can point it out to the rest of the community?
You see, this right here, you see the road that comes up off?
It's on page 28 of the packet. You can see it quite clearly.
So, I mean, right here in the lower corner, where the road is right up next to that red line, which is the property line.
Where the road 90s straight down.
It drops straight down to the south. But there's some parking right there, and there's the clubhouse, and that one section of the road that doesn't have any houses on it, that's the section that's within the wetland buffer. But again, we're not impacting the wetland, we're not impacting any wetlands on the site. And we're just in the green space next to the wetland, and there's still considerable moderate space that we're still leaving out.
Thank you for clarification.
But if we don't, not, I just get stuff, so I'm like, you're going to keep talking. Yeah, sorry.
If we don't have the road connection, then there's the issue of you're putting all that traffic out on Powell, which nobody wants to happen, so the hardship's there, it's just, we got to go get the variance, get that approved.
In all honesty, what our focus was, what we heard from the board, at least when we were up there, was please do everything you can not to impact this wetland. And so, we took an effort not to mitigate anything, and your alternative, and there is areas to mitigate to solve this issue, but that seemed silly to us, so we thought it was better to go along the wetland buffer than to mitigate, and we thought that was the intent of what the board had directed us to do. So, we made, when we listened, we really tried to listen to what we heard from the board and so forth, to try and do what was asked of us, and so, that was our intention to try and do that, because your only alternative would be to mitigate it. And this wetland, anyway, long story short, when that road was built to that senior community, it blocked some water, and that's what created it. If you go back and look at what this wetland was prior to that, it was very, very different. And so, the long and the short is that we're doing everything we can with someone who made, who's no longer with us, who I have the utmost respect for, but was getting a little bit older in age and missed it.
Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are now on Agenda Item 7B, which is the 2022 Master Plan.
So, I'm going to be intensely briefed this evening, because I just want to say, this, I would like Ms. Kramer and her friends to come be able to speak, because this is the first public hearing we're officially holding for the master plan, because I knew there were people that wanted to come talk about it. And so, while I have the floor briefly, I just want to point out, and we are going to make this bigger, but if you go to the homepage of the Community Planning and Development Department, this is the link to the master plan page, which we are beginning, and I hit twice, and so now I messed it up. But we are beginning to populate with information as we go forward here. And so, there is a form on this webpage that if you have comments, if you're watching from home and you want to yell at me about something, you can certainly put it in that web form, and it will get to staff, and we'll be able to start incorporating that into the plan. The other thing, I will steal the thunder of Item 8A, Bath Township has, did respond to our initial letter to them, and has some good comments about non-motorized connectivity, and so that, obviously, is something we'll be looking at sooner rather than later. And with that, I will cede the floor so the public can speak.
Thank you. Ms. Kramer?
My name's Cecilia Kramer, 4560 Oakwood here in Oakmas, and I have a couple of my friends with me, and we, well, let's see, John McCracken is a member of Faith Lutheran Church, as I am, and Mr. Fiedewa is interested in the property and owns the parcel to the north, which would be Chief Oakmas Circle Apartments. At any rate, we are here to talk a little bit about a request to put before you, which deals with the upcoming land use map that you are going to be discussing. Faith Lutheran Church has 10 acres at 4515 Dobie Road, and the land use currently shows that as its residential, marked R double A, actually, but residential property with an institutional overlay, which is the church, and it is a low-density designation. We will be approaching, or would love to have, you consider taking this area from being the low-density to a higher density to match the density that has been given to the properties just to the north of the church, which is the Chief Oakmas Apartments. Why is that significant? We are up on a high-traffic road, which would be really high-traffic road this year, with all the construction that has been shooting the traffic up and down Dobie Road, as opposed to trying to get through the other areas. But we are in the process of looking to work with the Chief Oakmas owners, the Fiedewas, about getting a portion of our property, about four acres, and putting residential, and this would be apartments and moderate price range, to use that property to the north end of our 10 acres. This would leave us with a little bit over five acres for the church and our own parsonage that's on the, which we're using with refugees right now. So, that essentially is our hope, that you will make a serious consideration about adjusting that land use plan to allow us to make that type of a change in our property. The property would be in a walkable area, we have sidewalks, it would assist the township toward goals for lower housing rates, for affordable housing, and also increase in the rental properties, which has been appropriate and interested in, the township's been interested in doing. And so, that is essentially what our proposal, our request is, and we're looking to you for serious consideration about this.
Thank you, ma'am. Do either of the gentlemen with you wish to address the board?
I don't know if they want to speak, or if they, do you want to say something?
I don't have any. Go ahead.
I can speak. My name is Greg Fiedewa, at 7030 Coleman Road in East Lansing, and yes, we just want to build apartments there. It's a, it fits in with the general character of the area. There's apartments across the street, and there's apartments next to it. We're not mowing down a big natural area, we're not filling in wetlands, so we think that it fits in with the character of the spot, and that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Commissioner, just a second.
My question is, this would be, the property would be sold to the?
Person building the?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, the church would be divesting itself of that property?
Yes.
Commissioner, just a second.
Well, I don't know that we need to await a land use map adjustment with the updated report, as opposed to a zoning variance or a zoning change of that property.
So, I had a very similar conversation with Cecilia just this afternoon, Ms. Kramer, I apologize.
Okay.
Staff would always, in 100% of cases, recommend a land use map change prior to a rezoning that is not in compliance with the current master plan.
Ah.
Because if you do not do that.
Then your master plan is not worthwhile.
The issue is that you can undercut every decision you make by saying it is not in compliance with the master plan.
Okay.
So, this, as I've advised them in my time here, the first step is during this master plan update, to change the designation for the northern third of their property.
Got you. Thank you, Tim.
Commissioner?
There was something, maybe a year or two back, where the church was looking to sell the property, and there was a proposal, but I don't think there was a rezoning of it?
If I could speak, yes, we brought the same issue before, and we ran into the problem that Mr. Schmidt just described. We were turned down because of a zoning change, because it wasn't on the land use map, plan.
Any other questions, your parents? Commissioner Primo, did, no? Anybody else? Thank you very much, ma'am.
That's it.
I guess an observation is, it's interesting, we had this conversation about affordable housing, and, you know, the next conversation that came up was, and here's a proposal too, so, you know, is that a way of balancing a project that we first heard about with the project that they're now proposing? Does that, does it help create some balance, and also speak to some of your concerns? That's, it's an interesting, interesting opportunity to think about.
Very, yeah, I thought the same thing when I heard it. Ma'am, may I ask you, you're not at the microphone, I'm just curious, you said that right now the church is finding housing for refugees. Is that refugees from the war in Europe? Is that?
Yes, for the last two, three years, we have turned our parsonage, which is on the property, and worked with Samaritas to take in refugee, young refugee men, who are now considered to be adults. They have gotten into the Samaritas system, many of them in, living in Jackson, where there's a house for the 12 to, let's say, 18 range, and they go to high school there, they're learning English, they're, you know, living in a huge Victorian mansion that's been turned over to multiple housing. But once they, on their 18th birthday, they get a birthday cake, a big party, and the door. They are free at that point to live under any viaduct in these United States. They have no income, most of them hardly speak English, they have no skills, they haven't had any, many haven't graduated high school. And so, our church, seeing that problem, has worked with Samaritas to provide housing, and we take them, get them to school. One is now going to the Oakmas School, several of them had gone to Williamston Schools, high schools, to obtain their high school diplomas. A number of them have graduated from our system and have gotten jobs. All three of the, we have three guys there right now, they all three have jobs. One of them is still going to school, to high school, other one is doing, yes, the two of them are still going to high school. So, anyway, that is, to answer your question, lengthy, but it is, it's a real need, and our church has been stepping forward to try and fill that.
Point of information for you is, the number-two employer in the Lansing area is Peckham Industries, and they're very sympathetic to hiring folks with those kinds of needs, so it's just a direction that you might want to suggest.
Oh, excellent idea. I'll bring that back to our refugee committee, but right now, two of them are actually working at Quality Dairy right down the street, they walk to work on the sidewalks and stuff, and the other one is working out at the Myers Warehouse. And so, but Peckham would be a good suggestion for those. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have?
I had a question for staff on the more general master plan, especially the letter from Bath Township, I was trying to work out, thanks for alerting me to that. The two sections that they were referring to were Park Lake Road and Nichols, is that Newton Road? Do we have a Nichols Road?
We do not.
We do not. But, yeah, I think the Park Lake Road, if I'm understanding correctly, is at Lake Lansing, where there's just a gap that we haven't filled yet, running up, and before it becomes wood rush or something? But the other one, I wasn't clear of, so I just wanted to put a pin in that one, we do look at the, I mean, it's really more of a pathway master plan than a master plan issue, so I'm kind of hoping that that communication can get forward to the Transportation Commission, and they can work with, figure out what those two gaps that were being called out were, so that, because I think we'll probably end up just referencing the pathway master plan by reference. I think we already do.
I think it's a gap, I think where Newton goes north eventually turns and then it changes names to Nichols, and I think there's a gap somewhere there.
So, as long as that can make its way to the Transportation Commission, they can make sure they hear that.
Absolutely.
You're superb.
All right, then. Any other comments or questions concerning item number eight of the agenda? All right, then, we move on to item nine, unfinished business, the text amendment involving daycare definitions.
This is the proposed changes to the definitions for family and group daycare homes in accordance with Public Act 10612, 2022, which was recently signed into law. This had a public hearing on October 10th, then we had no public comment then, and we have no public comment now. So, you have a resolution recommending approval of this zoning text change to the board, along with the redlining, clean versions of what that would look like, and also, for your reference, the Page 13 from the Township Focus that references the change in state law.
Just a comment, I have a problem with signing on behalf of the commission, a resolution that allows sex for children in a, in a multiple-care home.
To what are you referring to?
On Page 70 of the packet.
Is it in the, is it?
It's in the proposed resolution. Whereas PA 106, in that paragraph?
The last where.
The last whereas paragraph.
I don't think we want to be approving this.
This got through three pairs of eyes, I will make that change.
Aside from that, I don't have a problem with the proposed resolution. Commissioner O'Conne?
I move to adopt the resolution recommending approval of zoning amendment 2022-15 in accordance with the revised draft ordinance language dated October 24, 2022, as amended.
All right, we need a roll call, don't we? All right. The chair votes yes. All right. The chair votes yes. Commissioner Truusis?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cordill?
Yes.
Commissioner Shuesbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we are now on item number 10, recreational marijuana.
So let me again stress, as I've stressed multiple times in the past week, this is a draft, this is the first draft. This is intended to make sure that we are on the right path based on the conversations that we've had over the course of the last several months between the board and the planning commission. What staff has done, and again, this is only the zoning ordinance, there's a separate licensing ordinance that will be addressed through the Township Attorney's Office and the board. What we've done from a zoning perspective is rather than recreate the wheel, as no one thought we should do, we've taken the existing medical marijuana overlay and we have amended the language to modi, to be modified to allow for any marijuana related business. The way we do this is by providing specific definitions of the facilities as they relate back to the public acts that establish them. So the definition of, the reason there's two definitions is because the Medical Marijuana Act and the Recreational Marijuana Act have different definitions for what are commonly referred to as dispensaries. And so we have, in our ordinance, defined both of those terms, permitting both of those terms under the overlay. So functionally, the ordinance does, there's three major pieces to this. The definitions, the second piece is we are proposing to remove everything that is not retail oriented at this point. To date, we've had no interest in any other use, the market is dramatically changing, and we do not believe that we should be utilizing our existing industrial space for this type of facility. That, the letter from Director Clark in the packet outlines the concerns there. Thirdly, we are taking some of the pieces of the existing licensing ordinance that are zoning related issues, separations, noise, odor, things like that, and bringing them over into the zoning ordinance because they need to be here, not there. The one thing we are adding is, based on the conversation that's happened, is we are proposing, and this still needs to be run by the Township Attorney's Office, but we wanted to get the planning commission's feel on this first, a limitation, a distance limitation of 2,000 feet between any licensed premises. So functionally, not creating a density of the same use in a smaller area. So that's part A, and that's the text. Part B is the changes to the map. And so we've obviously heard a lot of comments recently about where we should go. So I'd like to walk you through the seven districts. These are the existing districts. Staff is proposing, would recommend at this time that we strike Area 1. This is the area along Towne Road, partially zoned industrial, partially zoned rural residential. The owner of the rural residential property has been trying to do a project there for years, and the industrial property is largely wetland, is unlikely to be developed for this type of use. Area 2 does not change, it gets renumbered, but does not change. It's still essentially the shopping center at the corner of Aslett and Oakmoss Road. Area 3 and 4, we're proposing to eliminate the Dunn Avenue District because, again, we don't believe that we should be using our industrial property for this type of use at this point. We're also proposing to eliminate the new Red Cedar Flats project from the district and the apartment complex at the, along Northwind Avenue from the district. This is actually an apartment complex and a senior care facility. And so this district would be tightened up. Area 5, which would get renamed, we have not proposed any changes to this district, but if there is a desire to do so, you very easily could take Newman Road across and cut the district, cut the sort of target coal shopping center area out of the district. Area 6 doesn't change, it's functionally two property owners, a couple, six properties if I remember correctly. And then last, the area Jolly and Oakmoss Road, proposing to take out the newly developed hotels, bank, and the car dealership that was recently renovated from substantially lessening the size of this district as well. That's where we're at at this point. If the planning commission has general, generally agrees to continue down this direction, what we'll do is we'll tighten up the language, we'll get with the Township Attorney's Office, and we'll try and bring this forward for public hearing in, in the future. But we would welcome any feedback at this time.
Maybe we should get from the visitors first. We have Mr. Robert Baldori and Marcus. Which of you wish to speak?
Robert Baldori, I live at 2719 Mount Hope Road. Been there for about 50 years, love living here. It's a great community, and I'm happy to see that we're finally making progress on opting in on adult use marijuana. I'm an attorney and I have many where, I have or have had over 100 clients all over the state of Michigan in various stages of the marijuana business. Michigan has approximately 1,700 municipalities. I think over 200 of them have now opted in on adult use marijuana, and every one of them, it's been a resounding success on a number of levels, improving the properties, improving the tax base revenue to the community. Each one of the retail outlets, I think the average is about 30, high paying jobs, professional jobs, all that. If we make some progress on this, and I'm completely in support of the, at least the shape of the proposals that Tim Schmidt has put in front of you, and I hope we continue in that direction.
Thank you. Marcus?
Yes, Marcus Baldori. I live at 2267 Mount Hope Road. Been a resident for 30 years. I'm one of the applicants and just want to echo support for this, and don't really have much to add, but I'm definitely looking forward to working with you guys on continuing this project as we have been for the past couple of years. So I just wanted to, to continue supporting it. Thanks.
I have one question.
Yes.
Much of what we're doing here is simply replacing residential, recreational marijuana with what was previously limited to medical use of marijuana. How, and frankly, I know your father, I've known him for many years. Have you seen any difference in the use of the property in those areas which have converted from medical marijuana to recreational marijuana use? Is there any substantial change in how the property is handled?
No, I wouldn't say that it hasn't. A lot of the people who used to have medical cards that would frequent establishments no longer have those cards, and it's essentially being phased out, from what I can tell. It's just being, sort of the market is just being transferred, from what I can tell. We, Castle Rock is our applicant entity, it operates in Jackson, so I've been able to see, when that started operating, it was both medical and recreational. We're considering dropping the medical right now for that facility. I think we're going to continue it at least for one more year, but over time, that's probably going to be phased out. But as for how that affects the actual property, it's really hard for me to say, but I don't think that, I mean, as we know, if it's just medical, it's not exactly, it's not viable from, you know, clearly that's the case here. In regards to, the rules as they apply to recreational facilities aren't meaningfully different. They're almost all small clerical things that I can't recite off the top of my head. There are a few, but, yeah. Any other questions?
Commissioner O'Conne?
I don't know if this is for the public or for staff, but it seems that one of the staff recommendations concerns simplifying the types of uses that are allowed and basically doing away with all but the retail category, if I understood that correctly. And I, I guess I'm curious, I think the part of the rationale for that, that I heard Director Schmidt explain was that since we haven't seen interest in the sort of, I don't know, is it production or processing or packaging sort of side, would we expect to have seen that in the absence of retail market, or is that something that follows along when there are retail establishments, that they're, they're upstream suppliers also? And do we, in some way, constrain the industry by restricting its operation in the township to retail only? And sort of finally, along those lines, if it's an industrial use that we're okay with, why would we then continue to exclude it from our industrial zones? I think I understand the logic of not wanting to replace valuable industrial land with the retail use, but are we kind of shooting ourselves in the foot by then leaving excluded an industrial use that we might like?
Yeah, so there's no evidence that we'd be hamstringing the industry by precluding those uses. Frankly, a lot of the growing occurs throughout the state and is transferred to processing facilities if they're not on site, and then comes to the retail operations. From an industrial perspective, I think the biggest concern that Director Clark had is frankly, these people are willing to pay top dollar for these facilities, and it's going to run out the existing industrial users that we have. And as we saw with the Sparrow Emergency Room, although it's great to add to the community, we did lose Midwest Power, which is a valuable industrial tenant in the community because we had no place to put them.
So it's less a matter of not attracting necessarily, but pushing, potentially displacing?
Correct.
And, okay, thank you. That helps a lot.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
I have a question about the property in, on Hagadorn Road. Seems to me that when we worked on this for the medical marijuana, the, this would be the new District 4, that went beyond provisioning centers and allowed testing and some scientific stuff that isn't mentioned in, in the proposed ordinance. Is that still going to be allowed in the marijuana ordinance as opposed to the zoning ordinance?
At this point, we would not recommend including anything other than the dispensary type uses in the ordinance. You know, from a testing perspective, there are an extremely limited number of those in the state. The majority of them process through one facility. You can argue many different reasons why that's the case, but there's not a huge market for that. Frankly, what you're looking at really is it, sort of the life cycle, you have the grow, the process, the test, the transport, the sale. And from our perspective, I don't think there is a large enough market, nor, we're trying to, we're trying to strike a balance as well in terms of how we proceed as a community, given the contentious nature of this. And we believe that the best balance is simply to go with the forward facing retail that everyone has seen around in other communities.
And the other question I had for you is the 2,000-foot limit between facilities excessive? I mean, 1,000 feet to a school is quite a ways. Most of these units or these places are small enough that you couldn't have more than one in there anyway.
We're happy to, we're happy to take a second look at it.
So the question is whether it's, it's useful for anything if there's nothing that could be built in there. I could see a 1,000-foot limitation, the same as the school, so if some of these, Grand River area possibly would be wide enough to accommodate that, but 2,000 seems like an awful large separation and probably is overkill.
Can I piggyback on that question? I wondered about that too, only because I don't have a limited number of available licenses. And then if you're reducing the number of places where they can be, and you're also requiring them to be, do we actually have enough physical space that we could fit, can we actually?
Yes.
Give those licenses out within the areas that we would, that would remain under this proposal?
Absolutely. And just to be clear, the licensing's...
Not the license, but the...
Still needs to be redone as well.
Right.
So whether or not there remains that same number of licenses is a whole nother question.
Okay. No, it's just, I can see some benefit, in certain cases, there is benefit to grouping as opposed to having it scattered all over, especially when there are concerns. It might be better to put it in areas where we're very comfortable with it and not in areas where there's some question. And I think that's what you're trying to do with kind of reducing or eliminating certain zones. But I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to proximity, if it makes sense. And so I'd be curious to know what the rationale for that part of this is, if it is really to reduce having more than one in a particular overlay area, or if it's to do something else that, that, you know, share more about what you're thinking.
Yeah, no, and we could take another look at that. I mean, we're trying, like I said, we're trying to create the bike while it's starting to roll here a little bit.
I'm sure, yeah.
And, and a dot, and pull over some of the standards that personally, from the licensing perspective right now, I believe should be in the zoning ordinance because their location and geographic based restrictions. So we're just trying to mold this all together. So we'll take another look at this 1,000-foot requirement. That's why I wanted to call it out, because it's something that is new with respect to this piece that was not there for the medical piece.
And I'm, to clarify, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just saying I'm curious why 2,000 and what the intent of that piece of this was compared to some of the other stuff that makes more common sense to me.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And some of the areas are, the overlays are so small that there'd be no way to fit more than one. So I appreciate the sentiment though of having some spacing too, because just kind of anecdotally, I was visiting my, my sister in Reading, which is a tiny little town, and my niece works, it's a place called The Pizza Barn. And we walked from The Pizza Barn to the local park, and it's the tiniest downtown. I mean, there's probably like six stores total, and three of them were dispensaries, and it was just boom, 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 all right next to each other. I thought, wow, how do they all make money? Anyway.
And I want to make sure that it's clear that Facilities is talking about building, not license, because there's separate license for the medical and the dispensary. So I assume that if we've got one location, one owner, even if he's got two licenses, one for medical marijuana, if that continues, and one if it's for adult use, that would be considered one facility.
It is one facility.
Okay.
I'm curious, this is just a curiosity question. Does, if medical marijuana is prescribed, is that covered under your medical insurance as?
My understanding is that is not the case.
Okay. Depends on the state.
So, so what you're saying about eventually why, why would, if it's, why would we need it? If you need it for medical, go, you know?
I mean, at this point, the difference between the medical and the recreational is functionally the excise tax.
It seems like, yeah, if it, I mean, what, what would be the advantage of calling it medical?
It's, it's the reduced tax at this point. That's really what it is. But the number of license, the number of patients with cards has dropped dramatically to the point where there's probably not enough to go around throughout the state. I, you know, you can guess, we can all guess, but I would say within five years, you may see a merger of the industry at the state level.
Anything further?
Okay. Hearing no major concerns, we'll continue to flush this out, run everything by the Attorney's Office, and get a public hearing scheduled in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I, I want to support the 2,000 feet, by the way.
Okay. We'll have a further conversation about that. I know multiple communities have done that, and that number is fungible.
Well, the other question is, how is the impact? We could see...
Absolutely.
How big the districts are, it may be meaningless.
Absolutely.
Application.
Yeah, 2,000 feet is pretty close to half a mile, and very few of those districts have a half a mile movement in them.
That's why I support the 2,000 feet.
Okay, I don't think anything is required from us on this at this point.
Absolutely nothing. We appreciate the feedback and we'll keep working on it.
Very good. Ben means the board is now on item number 11, Township Board Updates.
Two brief updates for you this evening. The Village of Oakmoss Brownfield Plan, public hearing was held, and the Township Board will be considering the, the approval of the Brownfield Plan at their meeting next week. This is, you know, another step in the road. Frankly, this is an important step in that it gets the state to start paying a little closer attention to this project, because there is now going to be a formal state ask. a little closer attention to this project, because there is now going to be a formal state ask. So, we continue to work on that. Additionally, the deletion of the RRA district and the rezoning subsequent to that will formally be introduced on Tuesday night, and we expect that action to occur by the end of the month. That's where we're at with the Township Board right now.
Liaison reports?
I was in New Mexico when the zoning board met, did they do anything significant?
The zoning board appeals, heard two cases. One of them was a, um, is it, there was two accessory structures, I think it was two garages, if I remember correctly. That's, that's why I'm drawing a minor blank. No, one reconstruction of a house on Hamilton Road.
Right.
That required a variance because of the floodway, the floodway in this case. So the new house is proposed to be out of the floodway, and functionally set back at the exact same amount as the surrounding houses. So that variance was granted. And the other one was, I believe, a garage in the front yard, and that variance was granted as well.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? No? Very good. New applications?
You know, I would just add that right before this went to press, we did get the application for a, an issue with the floodplain at Douglas J. And the MSU to Lake Lansing Connector Trail, both of which you will see next month, because both of them involve floodplain impacts. That is, that is what we have right now.
B or C, site plans, or site plans approved?
Still trying to get a few people over the finish line, although I will say that Consumers Credit Union, that you approved last year, has finally gotten sign-off from all of the outside agencies that they need, and we'll go with that.
All right, the record should reflect that there are no further members of the public present? So that brings us up to adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Commissioner Cordill, second?
Go on, Chuck, then, I'll do it.
All in favor?
No, I ain't leaving, no.
We are adjourned, thank you, folks.